Right, right. So therefore it's the way you're doing it.
No, I don't like such a kind of situation.
Oh, yeah, the nice posing chairs. Those were courtesy Rory for those chairs. He switched up his chairs in his place and he said, here, take these.
Thank you.
It sounds like Jerry Lewis.
He did.
Yes.
That was all for Labor Day. He watched the very best television on the go. Taco Fair.
Hey, Lightning.
And I always said, I'm the same to the whole country. You know, always saying.
All three of them.
Exactly. I was like, I'm the same.
I don't think I've ever seen anything Jerry Lewis. Except for maybe like if he was on like a special thing.
A lot of Jerry Lewis.
No, I just literally have never seen.
Stop it.
We're definitely seeing things.
Wow.
I mean, we were just from that family.
Little travels. You're happy.
He was telling us something about watching.
It's a part of American, honestly.
Here. Immigrant family. I don't know what to tell you.
She's too young.
We have three days.
Am I?
Dead baby.
Well, I'm not that young. I'm late.
Uh, well. Two more.
I've aged out of being so young.
This year. Okay, by show of hands, who watched the Jerry Lewis telethon at least once or twice?
But I don't know it.
See, listen.
Okay. I watched it.
Yeah.
What, in the, at any time?
At any time.
Oh, yeah.
I see.
You did.
Uh, average.
All right.
Do they still hold their eyes?
No, I think he's pretty dead, right? Like, I don't know how you have, unless they continue to.
That said, they do have a YouTube channel dedicated to rerunning them actually during Labor Day.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. The Telethon Years, I think it's called.
No, we can.
And at seven o'clock. Please rise for our pledge of allegiance being led by Lisa Spideau.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the world, the saints. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate that.
That was a trick. Keep hearing your toes. Different corners.
Yeah, I know. Uh, welcome to the first regular board meeting of the Village Walston Spa Board Trustees for the month of September 2025. Uh, I don't know what that was. He's a good play. Uh, but let us go to minutes. Can I get motion to the minutes of the August 25th, 2025 meeting be approved?
I'll read the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
Um, my only comment is I think there should be some mention in the minutes of why trustee Raymond and myself voted no on the 11:25 minutes, which was a topic of conversation at that meeting. It's because an important matter pertaining specifically to the mayor was so whitewashed that it contained no mention of the mayor at all. It was essentially incomprehensible and meaningless to anyone who didn't watch the meeting. This is not the first time that matters and complaints pertaining specifically to the mayor were conveyed in the minute without any reference to the mayor whatsoever, making the minutes essentially misleading in that regard. Statements that are critical of the mayor question his position should not be just eliminated from the record, serves the mayor but does not serve the public.
Do you accept any amendment?
Again, online, we have it available for people to look at.
Okay, so as the motion was made originally, all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose?
And I'll vote no.
I'll vote aye as I need to be a third vote in that situation, three to one. Uh, the ayes have it.
Sean is not here.
Sean is absent. I'm sorry. Uh, no presentations tonight. Public comment on agenda items only. Again, agenda items only for three minutes per speaker. If you're on Zoom and would like to speak about an agenda item, uh, then please raise your hand on Zoom. Anybody in the room that would like to speak? Lisa, go ahead.
Lisa Spideau, Village Walston Spa, resident taxpayer, town on the side, and address known to the book. In regard to motion 7A, questions, I would like to request the board to have answers to prior to voting on the motion. Why is the tree or trees in question being removed? Is it diseased? And if so, what's affecting the tree to be unstable? Is it rotted, roots exposed, et cetera? Who made the determination to remove? Was a licensed arborist consulted? Is this part of the nudity forest management plan? Will the tree or trees removed be replaced by another tree? Has the entire Tadisco Trail been assessed? So is not to bring in equipment more than once and address issues that need attention in order to minimize the disturbance to the wildlife and vegetation on the trail? Why has so much vegetation already been removed? Isn't that putting the cart before the horse? I can only assume based on what I could visually see that major in question is at the north end of the Tadisco Trail on the east side.
Sorry.
On the hillside.
Thank you.
There is minimal information in the motion. Is the equipment that we use expansive enough? That the gate and barrier will need to be removed and thus replaced? Will the truck effectively take out some of the canopy over the trail? I walked the trail and I did see some stuff. My concern is that I get that we can do some work to clear beforehand and maybe it needed to be done, I don't know. But on, on the north end, there's, there's a lot of missing stuff that wasn't there. Vegetation that wasn't there last time I walked it and a lot of wood chips and whatnot, everything else. I guess stuff needs to be done for safety. That's not. But if we could do it for the least disturbance of wildlife and such, thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask you. John? And as always, please try to point out the agenda item you're speaking of, like Lisa did, she pointed out 7A in that case.
John coming in 130 Bath Street, um, talking in reference to the zoning, which I believe is on your agenda. Um, I'd like to, the board to really give consideration to the suggestion of the master plan committee, which is to have a transition zone, uh, for the downtown, uh, primarily around Bath Street, over Malta Avenue. Uh, and thinking afterwards, uh, the thing later, they're probably also ought to include Royal Milton Avenue. These are places where there are residences and the master plan committee wanted to make the shopping experience more interesting for people coming to Walston Spa and also to help people living in that area to get a little extra income for their homes, especially because they're in a flood zone or what have you. And, uh, could have home businesses, perhaps on weekends or something like that, uh, just to add to the whole, um, shopping experience for the village. That's missing. That is a major, uh, is a major suggestion in the master plan.
John, can I ask you something real quick? Because I'm confused when you say that. I just want to make sure I got the right part of Bath Street you're saying. Where on Bath Street are you saying should be commercial next?
From, um, Washington Street North. Um, then there are also maybe include, um, Ford or, um, Vivier and Hilton, or then to Milton Avenue, also, uh, Malta Avenue, um, this side of the school.
Okay.
Those areas were looked upon as being transition zones. Now, the Milton Avenue was not in the master plan, but I think it probably better fits in that type of law. Um, also, I'd like to talk a little bit about signage, very simple. It's a very good, um, raw dealing with signage, but it's very complicated and it requires quite a bit of village resources to enforce it. Master Plan Committee felt that anything that could not easily be enforced was problematic because more than likely it would not be followed. And, uh, suggested that we look at the signage again, perhaps even send it to an ad hoc committee of business owners and building owners in, in the downtown area especially, to get their ideas as to what signage will work and what not. It's just very complicated. I think it's too complicated for our village resources. Off-street parking, one of the things the master plan wanted to do was to discourage tear downs. And because of the requirements for parking for some of the facilities in the downtown area, especially over Milton Avenue, they will encourage tear downs, just to, uh, just to accommodate the parking as required by the state. And there's a good deal, uh, in the old, in the old CBD, um, parking is public parking and lots and also on the street. Perhaps you, you know, with some enough of profits to put, put back. Why are the primaries to have a lot of parking can be problematic? Cluster developments are basically under state law to help out, um, businesses that are.
Thirty seconds. I'm giving you time back for 30 seconds.
I'm sorry?
You have 30 seconds left to put time back.
And, um, they did that. It's not an important for Walston Spa. Pocket fields by the Planning and Zoning Board are basically counter to zoning. And if a person is beat, is denied, the application is denied and there is no meaning because of the pocket, because there were no meanings, there is no record to appeal, of course. The courts will send it back to the Mississippi to, um, have a meeting on. And we should get rid of the pocket fields that are for planning and zoning.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else in the room? Jared?
Jared Ikuluchi, 24 Chapman Street. Um, with reference to the zoning piece on the agenda, um, a few notes. I would like to see the, uh, east side included in the R1B district, which makes more sense from both its historic character and lot sizes. They are more similar to what exists in the north end of the village and the south end of the village versus colonial hills. Similarly, uh, along with the comprehensive plan suggestion, in order to establish additional density without changing the character of the village, we should allow two-family dwellings by special permit in R1B. There's currently a number of two or three family houses there. Um, and in addition to this, in order to ensure the character of the village is preserved, we need clear design guidelines that reflect the existing built environment to maintain the character while increasing density. I brought this up at the last meeting. I think it's been said a few times. The code currently allows for, the draft code as it is, currently allows for accessory structures in residential districts to be taller than residential structures, 36 feet versus 40 feet. I don't think anybody in the residential districts would like to see accessory structures taller than their houses. Um, on the height note as well, during the workshop that was discussed, building height in downtown, I agree with the idea of 40 feet permitted and 50 feet at special permit, as was discussed in the workshop. I think it's also important that we establish a maximum building size, particularly in the Gateway District, to prevent the development of big box stores. Whether that's 40,000 square feet, 50,000 square feet, something that we can ensure prevents a Walmart being built in the Gateway District, say the old Grand Union lot. Um, lastly, on zoning, I think it's critical that both the ZBA and the Planning Board host their meetings, are required to host their meetings through Zoom and record those meetings. There are many people in the village who are interested in this, who can't attend all of these meetings, particularly when there are more than one meeting scheduled at the same time on the same day. Second thing I just want to address, I saw the good cause eviction piece on the agenda. I didn't see anything in supporting attachments with it. I do support the idea of good cause eviction law. Uh, they've been adopted around New York State and elsewhere in the country. And they help ensure that folks are not evicted from their homes without good cause. And I think there are some pretty good examples of that legislation that also ensure that we're not just allowing, um, tenants who are negligent on payments to stay, but that requires good cause for their eviction.
Sounds like it's.
And protections for those tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Liz?
Uh, Liz Cormos, 89 Hyde. On the good cause eviction law, I think that's a good idea, um, to do. We have to realize that our village is almost half rentals, um, the households in this village. So we have a large number of renters here. Um, on zoning, I'd like to ask, um, you had stated more than once that there would be no PDD in this first draft. And clearly, from what I read, it looks like it's in there. You know, in the back, you can do it. So I'd like it clearly stated in the, in the next draft that PDDs are not allowed in the village. Um, and, you know. Because that's what you said, it would not be added into the, this draft.
They're not.
They look to be.
Carol?
They're not in there as far as I'm aware.
Yeah. Uh, Marilyn is on Zoom, I think.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. I also, uh, wanted to speak, um, on the.
Name and address, Marilyn.
I'm sorry?
Name and address.
Oh, okay. 45 West High Street. I also wanted to speak on the, um, the zoning, which is agenda, agenda item 11. Um, three minutes is not enough time, but I, so I really just want to hit the highlights. Um, zoning advisory committee members, um, stand ready to help any trustees that may have questions about the zoning code or decisions we may have made. Um, so, uh, feel free to touch base with myself, Jared, Cameron, Margaret Dannison, and, uh, John Menzies, if anyone has questions. I also want to echo, uh, the comments made by Jared about the residential lot standards. Table one shows that a non-residential building, um, can be higher than the residential dwelling. I don't think anybody in a current neighborhood right now would want something like that. I also have a comment about the highway gateway business district. I noted with interest that the graphic 4.3 has now been altered from the original depiction that the consultant had provided, and it no longer reflects the landscaping or the aesthetic standards that were discussed by the zoning advisory committee and that we recommended. Although the text still talks about attractive, high-quality landscaping along the frontage of lots as a desirable attribute for future development, the illustration was recently changed and none of that text remains. A national standard was cited using, um, ANS Z 60.2, uh, as a measurement guideline for nursery plants, but it doesn't talk anything about suitability of plant materials in those new developed areas. I recommend you look, you know, a further than Cornell Cooperative Extension as the expert resource to, uh, provide guidance in the code specifically for plant materials that are suitable in those areas. The open space district, I'm wondering why, uh, the trustees have not updated the locations recommended by the zoning advisory committee? Or maybe it's the consultant has failed to adjust the map to include all open spaces recommended in the village. For example, Wiswall Park, Tadisco Trail, Iron Spring Garden, Lions Park, Victory Circle, and the soccer fields off High Boulevard. Also, it should be clarified in the proposed code that commercial recreational facilities owned by private businesses should not be allowed in this district.
I'm sorry?
How many seconds?
Ben.
Okay. I'll, I'll leave it at that and maybe you can just give me an update on the model preservation ordinance. Thank you.
No update and also the soccer fields are not, uh, open space. They are a school property and it is not entirely in the village of Walston Spa based on mapping by, by the county. Okay.
Karen, go ahead.
Karen Evanary is 8892 Milton Ave. Um, I just see that there's a motion for an Oktoberfest, which I think sounds like an absolutely wonderful time. I just, uh, wanted to know about safety, how that's going to impact the businesses around there. Um, when you have a small business, every dollar counts, or in our business, every quarter counts according to our accountant. So just wondering what the, um, how that's going to be handled.
Just as a reminder, FYI, street closure is going to be minimized to, I believe, the Kimmel Farms area, so it's going to be exclusively in that street. Uh, that was, uh, run by the chief, our chief, uh, with respect to making sure that access was available for vehicles if necessary or how the, uh, they would be running those vehicles. Anything you can remember from it specifically?
I, I don't believe he updated me on that. Sorry.
No problem. But, uh, basically it's confined to down there and it's a unique event for down there because we don't close that, uh, very often. So, uh, we look at that too because we've been getting some interesting thoughts and requests on closing down Front Street for additional purposes lately and we're pretty much at our limit for doing that right now. To be honest with you, that's one of the reasons why we can't, they moved up, as you know, to the fairgrounds because, uh, we don't want to keep closing Front Street, uh, and impact businesses, residents, uh, repeatedly in that situation. So that's kind of why we, we do look at that aspect. Thanks, Sarah, on that.
Anybody else? Seeing none.
Hold on. Kristen, raise your hand.
Well, what's going twice? And so to Kristen Ikuluchi.
Hello, Kristen Ikuluchi, 24 Chapman Street. Um, I see that the fire contract is on the agenda here and wanted to kind of understand, um, the communication with a lot of the shared municipal services that we have in our area. I know that we share fire services, um, in Walston. And I do think it's really important to have, um, collaboration and correct communication given to the public around, uh, these different shared services and, uh, departments. I'm curious if, uh, Mayor Rossi would, uh, like to speak to his incorrect information and inappropriate demands of the shared animal control officers that he, uh, posted on his Facebook this weekend. I think it's really.
Uh, Kristen, as you know, when you're trying to psych her.
Really important that we have, um, really correct information and collaboration amongst all of the shared services that our municipality uses. And I think it's really important for you as the leader of our village to make sure that that is corrected on the record. And I would like to hear your response to that. Thank you.
Kristen, this is your first warning for breaching protocol in the public comment. As is put up by the rules procedure, it will be much available in the second public comment, as you know, and will be discussed, I'm sure, later based on Facebook activity that suggests that. So, anybody else? Was there anything wrong?
Let's just move forward.
Don't worry. I thought you had something that I wrong. Uh, let's go to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the items on the following consent agenda? Anybody want to remove anything from there? Should I ask first?
No, I assume we talked to Karina, which is right across from the fountain that's planned there.
I don't know. We spoke directly with her.
Or do they?
I don't know. That would be something that the applicant would do.
That's what they've got to, well, we said to do so, so. Okay. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, all votes, motion carries. Can I get a motion that DVW be authorized to spend, expend the amount of $4,700 for tree removal?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. Jenny, do you want to give an update on what that is?
Sure. So half of the tree has already fallen. The rest of the tree poses a risk to the property owner, to his house. So we need to get in there with a crane and that's not cheap to do. So that's why we need to get in there and remove it. The brush that Lisa referenced in your comment, um, they had to, um, get in and remove a fallen tree last week that fell into some of the property, but they did the house. So there has been work in there removing things that are falling.
Yeah, that, what, and, and, and can I go back?
Not really, but.
Second comment. Second comment.
Sorry.
So this, this tree is actually in danger of hitting a house?
Yes.
Off of the Tadisco Trail?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Is that, is that coming out of, um, of the park and tree board?
We may go to the negative and have to hit, um, uh, fun bounce eventually because, uh, you didn't necessarily bug it all that for that level of it, but, you know, turn out what to handle what we can. Uh, can I get a motion that the supplier be authorized to solicit door-to-door from 9:925 to 10:3125 from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.?
I'll make the motion. Why, 8:00 p.m.? Is that where their code says?
I think they're utilizing, uh, student athletes, uh, from high school for teams and whatnot. And probably they're using it as the ability for them to get done with practices and assist is my guess why it's eight o'clock.
I feel like that's really, really heat. I don't know. I'm happy with seven o'clock if that's.
I think our code says nine o'clock though, doesn't it?
Yeah. So if they apply, I don't think we can restrict.
Okay.
So do I have a motion?
No, I'm not going to make a motion, so.
I'll second.
Well, I need it first. So you want to be the first?
Okay.
Mary, you want to be the second?
Yes.
Okay, Baskin and Price Bush in order, in that order, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I oppose.
I'll vote in favor of, so it's three to one, uh, passing. Can I get a motion that the attached asset vehicle and equipment paperwork for a 2,007 Ford Ranger be declared as surplus equipment? The motion further authorizes, uh, the mayor to execute paperwork necessary to place these items for sale via Auctions International.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin.
I'll second.
Trustee Fandanza, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the in-village sewer connection for 105 Fairground Avenue? The connection has been approved by Labella Engineering and the Village Water Department.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin. Trustee Fandanza, discussion.
Is this to Moaken Hill property?
No. This is the subdivided property up, uh, past it, uh, up there. Uh, we had, uh, done only half of it, uh, in a previous meeting and potentially left out the sewer side of it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, my. The walk-on slate?
That's a you thing. That's.
Oh, wow. Wow. Hurt me, hurt me. Go ahead. Uh, Mary's announcements. Um, this is, this is, uh, this is the Fox News Channel. I don't have any time here. Yeah, not that way. Come on. Had to do it. Um, so let me take you through what happened over the last couple of weeks so that everybody has a clear picture of what led to what happened and also some of the misconceptions on the other end spectrum on this. Um, this started about almost two weeks ago now, a little less than that. Uh, we had gotten a call, village call about fox in somebody's, uh, yard. And my notion was, let's send it over to animal patrol. I asked our clerk to do so. She, it's, uh, who did we end up getting?
No answer. The Milton Ave Hall, the, it said they had called Mr. Brown, you know, if he answered this call, we got him.
Well, and it's fitting because Dave is also the animal patrol officer for town of Boston, which we are kind of dual-hosted since the animal patrol for the village, uh, was kind of gone by the wayside during Mayor Wilbrecht's tenure. So, um, never got any feedback on what happened with that one. And so we thought it was a one-off, fine, whatever. Um, last week, Thursday, Friday, I was in Pennsylvania and Friday morning I got, uh, a text from our police chief, Chief Bush, who absolutely despises social media. So when he texted me, he does. When he texted me, we need to put out PSA on social media. I really almost fell off my chair during that one and I was like, what's going on? He told me that a woman and her dog were walking and were almost attacked by a fox. She grabbed the dog, retreated into a house, called the police. Uh, Officer Fisher responded and the fox nearly attacked him and unfortunately he had to act to put the fox down. So not the, you know, not the ending we wanted, but that was, that followed, I think he said, uh, Chief Bush, six total calls. Can't tell if it was a single fox at that point, uh, or even related to the previous week, but seem to be having an ongoing scenario here with residents who are in fear or concerned of that situation. So I asked Chief Bush what he felt the proper directive was because one of the most important duties in, then you say it's zoning, but for the mayor, it's honestly health, safety, and welfare. To this day, I'll say that to you, uh, all day, every day. And in this case, you know, with our police department, our fire department, and our DVW, that's kind of our health, safety, and welfare group that I work with every day. We had a meeting actually today, uh, all the, uh, directors of that, those, um, departments. But on Friday, I asked him what the directive was and the directive was basically what you read on Facebook. I, unintentionally left out the word. I unintentionally left out the word potentially and I apologize for that. I did put that in as soon as I noticed I left that one out about the radio situation. Folks, read it as I'm spewing facts. I was actually spewing a directive to our residents. The directive was flat out, for your safety, assume the worst, get inside, and call the authorities. Let me read some things on the animal control pages from the town of Boston and the town of Milton for those that have misconceptions about what animal control does and doesn't do in these situations. And I do want to add that Officer Fisher, who has a long career in law enforcement and was a hunter at one point, has stated, in his opinion, looking at the animal and the condition animals in and the behavior that was exhibited by the animal, he felt it was rabid based on that indicator, those indicators. Unfortunately, we can't get it tested because it didn't bite anybody. So let me read you the pages here substantially of this from the experts, animal control on the town of Boston page. Town of Boston Dog Control Officer can assist with dog bites, dog complaints, et cetera. The town does not have an animal control officer to handle cats, bats, rodents, or other wildlife. Please see below for information regarding rabid animals or nuisance wildlife. Scroll down for dog licensing, dog park, dog control law, or dog control officer information. Next section, rabid animals. If you suspect a rabid animal, call 911 and they will dispatch the closest law enforcement officer to take care of the animal. An animal is tested for rabies only if it has bitten a person or cat. Nuisance wildlife, for assistance with nuisance wildlife, raccoons, skunks, deer, fox, et cetera, or wildlife help, click the links below or contact the New York State DEC. Problem is, DEC does not instantly show up at somebody's door if there's a major concern about what's happening. Animal control technically from town of Boston's end at least, isn't going to be, according to this, responding normally. And if they do, then it means that they're changing their policy in that situation. I'll get to that in a moment. Town of Milton, if an animal control officer is unavailable, please contact the Saratoga County Sheriff's Department for assistance. For emergencies, please dial 911. It goes down to state, due to state rules and regulations, the animal control officer does not handle cats or wildlife. So Chief Bush, who knows this, wanted to have a venue for residents who had instant concerns to be able to turn to our police department, who could then help figure out the next proper steps. Let me say about the animal control. I asked both animal control officers to call me. I yet to receive a call back. And at this point, I'm going to be mandating that we receive the last year's worth of calls related to the village that they have tended to on the Boston side and Milton side of the village. And that moving forward, we receive those reports much like they provide to the towns themselves. Because at this point, I am curious to see and concerned enough to see what is happening and what they are dealing with day to day. And I'm also going to ask them to clarify their policies because they spoke as if they were handling wildlife on social media, but their pages say they don't. So I think for everybody's sake in our community, we all need to have a better understanding of what our animal control officers will or won't do. And so I will be putting that out tomorrow, just to give a preview to that. And I will give feedback, once I receive that, to the board and to the community as well. What was bothersome to the discussion afterward, and I've got thick skin, I've got broad shoulders, I don't care, my job is to make sure everybody is safe at the end of the day. The things that we're coming across that were more or less sort of suggesting it's all okay. You know, just go take pictures of it and, you know, it's probably mange and everything else. And that may be true, but the idea is, the directive was, this isn't factual, this is a directive. Assume the worst. Avoid the animal. Get inside. Call the authorities. Don't deal with it yourself. And that I will say over and over and over again. Assume the worst. Avoid it. Because we care. And this shouldn't be something you go and try to, you know, how many older people out there know how to use the zoom on their phone to maybe do it from 100 feet away or whatever? That will get you, like, don't worry. But you get my point is, I don't want people getting close enough to it that they could get attacked themselves. Did they have a Ring doorbell camera or something like that? You know, okay, grab a photo, show it to somebody. Great. And the other outlet is essentially, if you feel like you can't exit your own house, that probably is a good reason to call 911. Just saying. If the county has an issue with that, they can call me and tell me they have an issue with that. But Chief Bush had no issue with me going in that direction with it. And we reviewed it during Friday and we agreed we were going to maintain the way we were on that situation. But I just want to be clear. I was not saying every animal is rabid. I'm not saying that foxes coming out in daytime are automatically rabid. The point was, if you encounter something, especially in daytime, which you might not be used to seeing, and it's wildlife, get inside. Get away from it. Assume the worst for that purpose. Our police are not folks that are looking to kill animals. Our police are actually animal lovers, for the most part, from the guys I know. They, you know, pets all the way and everything else. They would never, ever tolerate abuse of an animal, be it domestic or wild. And some of the notions and some of the things that were being said on different social media were highly offensive to our police that don't act like that, that don't look at animals in that way. They want to help our residents stay safe as much as anybody. And Chief Bush, I just talked to him before this meeting, reemphasized that fact. He would do it again at a heartbeat because at the end of the day, as long as it protects somebody in our village, that is what matters to him. And the same goes for me. So I understand there's some very well-intentioned groups. And we'll probably hear from one or two of them in public comment number two because I can read social media as much as anybody can. But understand, I wasn't spewing factual information about rabies beyond saying we had a potential case of rabies that we can't get tested, as I read to you, unfortunately. And we had another incident, as Liz knows, that a skunk that was foaming had to be put down by the sheriff's department. And I don't believe that got tested for the same purpose or reason. And so there are concerns. And the New York State Department of Health did put out a warning to the state in July about rabies because of an increase that was being seen statewide. Long Island suddenly has a rabies problem. And it's actually hitting upstate as well. So this is a problem. It's not just a Boston Spa problem, but Boston Spa, you know, under my leadership, is going to at least have an outlet with our police department under Chief Bush's leadership to try to make sure that folks are safe. I understand some people may have fox in their backyard that they love having back there and everything else. And I probably would say to you, make sure your neighbors are that thrilled about it too because, you know, that's, it could be a little over the top for some, I guess. But, you know, if that's your motive or MO, I get it, okay? But there are folks that are going to see a fox walking down McLean Street or McMaster Street or Malta Avenue that are going to be pretty scared. And if the fox is basically coming at them or not moving, and that happened apparently on Malta Avenue, according to somebody on my Facebook page, it must have been kind of near you at least.
Not my fox.
It wasn't your fox.
My fox is good.
It was Glenda the good fox. But you get my point being that, you know, there are people that don't think certain wildlife belongs to certain places and are scared to see it and would like to have some kind of safety or feeling of safety in those situations. And I understand that. And they deserve that. Love animals to death. Sister, huge animal lover. And this isn't about wanting to be cruel to animals. This is about wanting to be very considerate to humans and trying to make sure that we don't get people just shooting randomly at wildlife also. So just go inside and don't do anything besides call the police is what that directive is. So that's where that all came from. I just want to be clear about that. And, you know, I apologize if folks took it differently. But again, you know, social media being what it is, it's great until you read the comments section. But I would suggest that folks, if you're going to put something in the comments section, read the darn comments section first because the 126th time that somebody says the pictured fox that wasn't the fox that was Friday's fox has mange versus rabies, I didn't even know that the animal had mange. I'd taken the stock photo of in the first place. So thank you for the education on what mange looks like, but that was not the point. Stop self-diagnosing the fox. Understand that there could be a real safety problem that comes with it. And we don't want somebody to be on the wrong end of that. That's where it was. I think I spoke more than enough about that. Treasurer's report coming up after I go through a couple liaison reports. Just going to track it down here. Sorry about that. Burdette, go ahead.
Mine are pretty brief. BSBPI, they're planning the car show for Columbus Day weekend. They are looking for volunteers for those that, it's a lot of fun if you get to do it. And it's a nice day usually of hanging out and just enjoying the community. But they always need a lot of extra hands and, you know, lots of hands make life work. So please reach out to dina@ballston.org. Also, just a reminder, our farmer's market is still going on. And it will be going on until October 4th, where Monday also will be doing a fall festival. Peach Festival is like a knock out of the park. Literally, it was packed. So they're hoping to kind of recapture that and get some excitement again about the market. Just a side note of businesses and where police intersect. There was an incident, not the business's fault, not regular's fault, but someone just, you know, having, I'm not sure, just too much, too much enjoyment for the day and somewhat belligerent toward people and there was an accident. And I have to give our officers and our sheriff's department a lot of credit. They handled it immensely professionally. They were very thorough. They made sure that person got to the hospital. You know, and just, I really want to commend them just always for their compassion. And they know, do know some of these folks that have problems. So it's just really great to see our staff, our law enforcement, really support our community in this way. And I just wanted to, in particular, call out Officer Ackley, who was on the scene. And, you know, just very diligent, you know. He's, was he a, I have to ask, was he a Cubs, or not a Cub Scout, Eagle Scout? Was he ever that?
I would assume yes.
That's, yeah. That's the vibes that he gives off. But truly, you know, very thankful for all of them. So that's my report.
We just go back to treasurer's report because it's kind of free for me to say that there's a bunch of numbers in here that I'm not going to go through all of them. But it shows the total water bill and sewer bill amounts and your date revenues, major revenues, including real property tax, muted water sales, gross facilities tax, and pool fees, which actually were about $29,636. And it states that bank reconciliations, I think that were actually sent out just before this meeting from LGSS actually. So there is that. Mary?
Okay. The library is going to be hosting an adult tea party on Saturday, September 13th, at 1:00 p.m. in celebration of the release of the final Dutton Abbey movie. There's going to be finger foods, trivia, Victorian-inspired craft, and a movie trailer and the recap of the previous movie will be shown. They encourage patrons to dress to impress. So that'll be fun.
What's the date of that again for Carla?
It's September 13th at 1:00 p.m.
Well, you said Sunday, which is the 14th.
Saturday.
Oh, it's Saturday.
Did I say Sunday?
I thought you did. It's Saturday. Oh, it's Saturday. It is Saturday 13th.
On Thursday, September 11th, the remembrance ceremony will be held out in front here at 7:00 p.m. Remembrance of those who lost their lives during September 11th.
Please come out, everybody. If you have any memory recollection, which is, I think, everybody in this room, please come out.
And open gym is back at VACC every Friday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Kids over, I think any age can play basketball, volleyball, soccer. Participation agreement has to be filled out prior. And children under 12 need to be accompanied by an adult. You can give VACC a call at 518-885-3261 for more info.
Thank you. Ben, go ahead.
Great. This is from Caitlin, here the Park and Tree Board. Park and Tree Board wants to again thank everyone who signed up for their first year of BSPA in Bloom. On Friday of last week, they looked at and documented everyone's displays and they are currently working to finalize decisions on different award categories. And they will announce winners later this week on their Facebook page, Park and Tree Facebook page. Outside of those who sign up to participate, the Park and Tree Board wants to thank and recognize everyone who helps make our village beautiful in the warm months. We appreciate business residents, adopt a plot, and our DPW for contributing to the beautification of our village during the growing season. They also want to remind everyone that autumn is a wonderful time to plant trees. If you are thinking about planting a tree or a street tree or yard tree, please reach out to the Park and Tree Board and they can assist in picking the right tree for the right location. They also have a recommended little tree list for the village based on soil tests and locations to plant it. The next Park and Tree meeting is September 16th at 7:00 p.m. at Cornell Cooperative Extension. And then for Community of the Arts, not a ton to report. They had a great turnout at their August 31st Sounds of Summer concert at Brookside. Their next meeting is September 17th at 7:00 p.m. at Brookside. And the big thing to share is they are looking for another member of their committee. And they do a lot of good work. And also, members get to be very creative. And basically, if you have the initiative and the ideas, the committee is very open to doing new things. So they welcome all, anyone who's interested. And if you want to contact them, you can call or contact the village or you can go on Facebook and contact the committee on the arts.
Ben?
Can I add one thing to Park and Tree?
Oh, I don't know.
No, to Park and Tree slash BSBPI, walk and come then. For those that go to Kelly Park or you haven't gone to Kelly Park, the planters, these giant tub planters have vegetables with them. Like people scoping out, take some tomatoes, there's a ton of tomatoes. Would hate to see those not be enjoyed. It's a really great idea to have available food in Kelly Park.
If they're white, they may be pickleball, so be careful.
No, no. There's eggplants coming, there's hot peppers. So I think that would be a lovely thing to have more up, but don't let it go to waste.
I'm going to do my best Sean Raymond impression here and give you a DPW report. How's that?
Okay.
We repaired a, according to Scott Kearns, we repaired a sewer main break on Rollins Street, assisted with a valve repair at the county jail. Put the cover on the pool and winterized it. Yep, summer's over, kids. We are continuing to do the striping of crosswalks and stop bars throughout the village, continuing the EPA mandate for service lines. And they've been prepping for paving, more in that one second, rest of the roads that we are going to pave. Catch basin replacement, manhole repair, valve box repair, et cetera, going on alongside that. We took delivery of a new pickup truck and are installing two-way radio warning lights on it. However, I will tell you that Scott loves that truck. Watering the trees along Milton Avenue and in Wiswell Park is something else they've been doing. With respect to paving, I want to actually, it's misconception night for me. Some folks on social media were suggesting that Lexington was paved within the last 10 years. We keep records of it and the last paving of it was, I believe, Scott said, 2011. It was more than 10 years ago, so it is on the schedule. Adam Circle, which is something that I'd like to add on, it costs $35,000, is one that I don't think has been paved in 16-plus years. I asked Scott today, does it need it? In his opinion, and he said absolutely yes. So I would ask the board to be okay with the add-on. Scott, Sean had suggested, he thought while we were there, it's probably most cost-effective to do it then instead of remobilizing since it's right off Lexington. Does anybody have an objection to that?
No, I think it's good. Residents have complained about it, so.
Everybody good with that?
I'm glad it's going to be.
Good. Okay, so I'll give them the, go ahead to, it may go over budget by some amount like that, but at this point, we're all kind of in the opinion that we should do it. And we'll look at how to maybe rectify that the next year on the other side of it. Okay. What's next? Zoning. An old business. Ben, you requested it.
Yes. Well, so we are in the middle of trying to bring this across the finish line. And, and there's still, in my mind, a number, oh, I think in everyone's mind, because based on last special meeting, a number of unresolved issues. And so there's a couple ways we can, you know, move forward on that in terms of conversation within the board. Last Thursday, I sent you an Excel, one, my attempt to, or my suggestion for how we can potentially converse with each other between meetings and understand where we, you know, what the issues are and where we stand on those issues. And because we can only get so much done during the meeting, during like a special meeting, it will help us to move forward a little bit. So that was one idea for how to move along. I haven't heard back from anyone on that idea. You know, some of the, I do think we will need another special meeting and maybe we can talk about scheduling that tonight because there's so much more left to talk about. Yeah, some of the key issues in my mind, and I think in many of our minds, based on the last meeting, you know, the non-residential uses and residential zones, how to manage those and the standards around those and whether they should occur in residential zones. Like someone said, the open space updates, make sure that's accurate and complete. And some of these issues are things that I bring forward, but I'd be interested in what everyone thinks about these and they're in the Excel and people can add and provide their own concept. Provided a column for everybody and then including, as well as Carla and Chris, they have thoughts. So other issues, maximum size of residential dwellings in residential zones, maximum building size in downtown and gateway districts. When I say maximum size of residence, I mean maximum, maximum units, rental units of, in residential zones per building. Planning board operations, discretionary actions and transparency issues. And whether there could be separate zoning for the former nursing home site, possibly the county building sites. Form zoning, I thought was gonna be part of this, but I don't see it really in the zoning here that would may address the residential uses and non-residential uses in residential zones. But one big piece that would be good to understand clearly is whether we can zone the nursing home, for example, in a particular way and it won't be considered spot zoning. And Chris came up with an example that indicated that that was possible. And Carla, I guess we're waiting on your, your response to, or your legal opinion regarding that. So, but, you know, whenever we can get that, that would help us understand if we should create another zone for nursing home, which is very different than the residences or, you know, neighborhood around it. The same with the county buildings. So those are just a handful of, some of the, I've heard some of the, from the poll comment as well. So I would suggest is a way to move the conversation forward is both for us to share our thoughts in, on some common document that we can all see and think about. And then also, I think we do need a special meeting to talk, you know, face to face. The thing about PDF, the thing about PDD in the zoning does not say, and this is again a question of, it's a conversation. It does not say PDDs are allowed, but it does say the private property owner can request an amendment to the zoning, which PDD could potentially fit under that or not. But that's what, that's what I'd like to have very clear in the zoning and in everyone's mind that we are waiting on the PDD and there cannot be, you know, a private property owner suggesting an amendment of that kind. So that's just one example. Those are some examples of unanswered questions that would be good to do. The last I just like to mention is the PDF of the zoning that's on the website, it looks like a photocopy of a PDF and it's very hard to read in places like the use tables. There's some places that are impossible to read. So I'm not sure why this wasn't done, but it would be, I recommend you use the actual PDF.
Ben, I think it swapped already.
What?
It was changed last week when you brought it up.
I thought I checked this past weekend. It was still there. So I'm glad. Thank you. I'm glad it was switched. Nobody replied to me, so I didn't know. But thanks for doing that. And so anyway, those are my two cents about zoning. I'd be very interested in hearing other people's opinions of remaining issues, but also, and also the process for, for getting to this to the next stage.
Come on. Yeah, I mean, we should have another workshop.
Yeah, unfortunately Sean's not here to give us his availability, so we're just.
Do it via email?
Yeah, I think we have. We know what Sean's availability is. Anybody?
I don't know. Date night tonight.
So I'll have to decide if I have the email for sure. Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna do another special meeting.
Yeah. I think that'll be good.
Any other thoughts?
Not at this point, no.
All right. So what do people think about?
You just asked the question, any thoughts?
I thought I'd get some response because I haven't on email. What do you think about a common document that we all share our ideas to, to keep the ball rolling? Because we can only do so much at a special meeting.
I'm open to it. I just have to dig into it a little bit. I don't know what works best. It's hard when it's in a separate Excel versus some online sort of thing.
No, it would be, no, we put it online. Yeah, we put it in a, one single shared doc and we'd all.
I must not have that email, Ben.
Well, I sent you, no, I sent you Excel and I asked Carla, yeah, I asked Carla if she might put it on a share.
I don't know how to do that.
But you've done it before.
Not to Google Docs, I haven't. You asked me to.
Oh, well, doesn't have to be Google Docs. I just meant a shared document.
Last time I did that, people decided they didn't like it. So I was waiting to hear from the board tonight to see what they want from you.
All right. Well, I didn't hear back anything from anybody. So that's why I'm bringing it up right now, right here. It'd be great to hear from people about, so Bernadette's open to that with a shared document. I think that's a good way to go. And then we can all see. And, and, you know, I put my, my topics that came to my mind, you know, I had 150 comments and now I've got like 15 and I'm putting forward in this Excel. But other people should add what they think are the key issues to this document. Obviously, we don't make it, want to make it 100 pages. But, but that is, it wasn't just, here's my issues, but here's a shared document that we should all have ownership over and contribute to so that we can understand where everyone stands. And, you know, some of the positions I put down there, I'm not sure if that's the right thing to do or not. And I'd like to hear from other people about what they think. So that would be very helpful.
I think it was, here's my issues because there were no other issues besides yours on it, but.
Right, I started it. I started the process. But, but I invite you to add your own. And also, you know, if you disagree with something I've said, just say, I think this other thing should happen or, you know. So that's how we're gonna, you know, be able to move forward is to try to get more of that kind of conversation. I feel like, you know, we front loaded with the ZAC for a year and a half and that didn't get very far. And now we need, there's no way to avoid some significant discussion among the board about this 150-plus page document. And so any opportunity and vehicle we have to do that, I think will be, well, you. All right, so thanks. So I don't, so Carla, do you want to create the shared document? Do you want me to send links to this document that's on my OneDrive?
Whatever you want to do. I just want to make sure everybody understands if you've got me on this drive and you've got me providing legal advice, that it's not public.
Right, yeah, this is for our use.
And it's not to be given to anybody in public.
Right, this is for our use. And I don't know, I put a column for you. You may not see the need to answer anything on there. I don't know. But you have the opportunity to. Certainly, the spot zoning question is something that's outstanding.
I think the use of, what was it, Outbook's version, it was like secured sort of documents, helpful. Whatever way you think.
I don't, I would like someone else to create this document.
All right, I'll do it. I don't mind.
It's not really a legal position for me to do.
All right. Well, you did it with a law, so I thought you'd do it this time.
Because I drafted the law. This is.
This is, this is comments on a law. Okay. So I will do it. I will create, or I created a document. I will send the links to, for everyone to share and be able to edit this document, meaning the board, Carla and Chris. And I welcome your comments. Thank you. And, and so in this coming week, we'll, we'll schedule a special meeting. Thank you.
Are you sure?
I'm feeling the need to just clarify where we're going. Since I'm not getting a lot back.
Well, because some are like, okay, we're not like arguing it.
I just, sometimes we say things and then they don't happen. So I just want to be very clear.
I want you to see if you're done. Frank, let's go to the next topic.
All right, let's go to the next topic.
There we go.
And thanks for letting me talk.
I think we're all retired, maybe. We're all being silly. I don't want to step out of turn. Okay, thank you. So fire contract asked for that.
I'll fill the details if you don't mind. We'll do it that way. That might be the best way.
Okay. So why I asked to put it on the agenda in old business? To answer one of the questions of who's been in communication, there's been a number of people involved. The mayor, Scott Ostrander, supervisor Milton, different committee, or not committee, different council people, different trustees have been involved. There's been a lot of communication with John Frolish and myself. And I know Mike was on some of those call, or not calls, meetings. There's been a lot of, lot of thoughts and hands involved and people that care about this issue of, you know, the issue of fire service. So and our chief, I don't want to forget. Either Beisho or Kevin Crowe, both are involved. So we're kind of getting to a point where, you know, basically Milton has provided what they have agreed, agreed on generally as a board. It's 5% over for five years, would be a five-year contract. The town of Milton, I believe, is going to be sending more formal documents to each of us. And they're requesting that we respond at this point. Chief Crowe has looked at the numbers and is actually, he feels very confident that it covers, you know, all the, all their needs and also have, they have money for the truck payments and including the ladder truck later. And while I know there's a goal of getting LoSAP together, hopefully at this time, they would like to postpone that. And, you know, in lieu of that, they would just want to make sure we have the contract sorted out. Ask Carla if she had any information that she could provide us or any memos or anything. And this is an issue that she has dealt with in another municipality. Just to explain to us what the state requirements are or whatever the state law is asking of us, both town and village. And, or not asking of us, that happens too. And just for us to have all the background in our decision. Chief Crowe, when I said he has looked at the numbers, he has said he's willing to sit down with any of us. I need trustee, mayor to explain where they are with the finances when they figure this contract that they're proposing. So I just wanted to tee this up for us to talk about. Right now, you know, because we've got Carla's memo, probably need a little time to just, you know, digest some of the information. And I know, like I said, those documents are coming. So I'm not, you know, expecting an in-depth conversation today, but just mainly get us to a point because I think toward the next meeting, we should consider taking it up.
I want to be transparent about this, so I'm gonna take a minute here. And I have a funny feeling Liz and I generally have been almost aligned on certain aspects of what I'm about to say. I'm curious to see if you stay there or not, Liz. I'm curious on this one. So one of the things that happened in our district, our fire protection district in the town of Milton over the last few months is that there have been certain properties either that have gone on to the tax rolls fully, adding assessed value and obviously more to protect as a result. They may have been locked, but now that they're built out, they're actually houses that's to be protected. Or reassessed value of something like Winter Circle, which was a major change. After the back and forth occurred, the assessed value between last year, well, what was taxed this year will be taxed next year by the town of Milton, in our district only, went up 7.1% in one year. That is unheard of. 7.1%. So I said to Milton, that's sort of a game changer because normally, you know, whether or not you feel we can deal with rate, rate sort of matters. Plus, this is an indicator of what you're protecting and how. In this case, it's a mixture of change of value, but also change in number of viable properties in that situation. So if you look at the 5% in the first year against the 7% assessment growth, the rate that we're actually getting goes from 97 cents that we're getting this year to 95 cents next year. It goes down. Now, this is an improvement over something that occurred about a year or a year and a half ago, where the offer would have, over five years, gone down to, I estimated around 87 cents if you assumed about 3% growth a year. That's just going the wrong way. And I looked at it and I said, what's going on here? What, what are we missing here? And what we are missing here is, as Bernadette brought up, LoSAP, like the Service of Work Program. It is essentially a bonus system through, at retirement, that as you participate as a firefighter in calls and different functions within the houses, you get credit basically toward something you'll get toward retirement. And it's basically a good retention tool and activity participation tool. Most fire departments around us have LoSAPs. We do not. Milton funds Rock City Falls and a portion of Harmony Corners, but they are not willing currently to fund one for the Village of Boston Spots Fire Department. Now technically, the Village of Boston Spot funds it, but it's a question of, okay, we shift funding, we're putting toward trucks to the LoSAP and give the funding to trucks over to Milton. It's basically just, you know, switch the shells over on that. In the back and forth about LoSAP, Councilman Frolish had told me, oh, I think it's only a $50,000 type of annual expense. But we had done the homework on this already. And I actually got a Mr. Parrott, who I had met with a couple of years ago, because Chief Beisho asked me to. And Chief Beisho had set us down to educate us on LoSAP in 2023 as well. He had a full chart and there's a couple of different ways you could do it in terms of how much lookback period you give to the current roster, who you've given some credit or not for the couple, last couple of years. And we're between $120,000 and $150,000 a year. We have a very vibrant department of nearly 80 firefighters active. Compared to Rock City's around 27 right now and others around us generally a little bit smaller. Maybe Multirich is a little larger, I'm not sure. But we have a very vibrant number for ours. That's why the LoSAP number is so high comparatively. I went back to Milton and, you know, Chief Crowe has said exactly what Bernadette said. You know, don't need the LoSAP necessarily. As I asked him today, I was like.
To be clear, to be clear, he's just saying that.
Not, not.
The future that is possible.
And I've said to him, Kevin, why are you treating this like an either or when you should be able to have it? Because to be treated equitably, you should have this. If every other fire department around us has a LoSAP, why are we not giving or getting one for our guys and asking Milton to help out? So I went to Milton and I said, look, I understand you're not gonna pay for all 130-ish thousand, 140,000 dollars of it. I'm willing to go back to my board and say, look, to make this happen, to basically put us in finally the right position for our fire department where we can afford the ladder truck, the pumper truck and the other truck that they need to replace, build reserve in the meantime, because we've got about four-year wait on the ladder truck. Get you the operating budget you need. And, you know, Tana Balson's already gone up for us. So, you know, they've been very accommodative with us. I'll put in, you know, with their assistance, $40,000. We'd ask you for another $80,000 over time, not instantaneously. We build up toward it. And we'd ask Tana Balson to kick in the additional about $12,000, $15,000 that they're taxing currently but not giving us because they taxed it $1.16, but gave us $1.12 or $1.13 this year. You know, because Milton has been saying over and over again, oh, the village doesn't do enough for its own department. Well, we are guaranteed right now $105,000, whether they use it for building improvements or not. Policy right now is they get to keep it if they don't use it for the reserves ultimately at the end of the day. So another $40,000 pretty much says that the village is paying for the LoSAP if it comes to that. And for whatever reason, there remains this either or thing, I think, for our chief because he fears that if we press that issue, we're not gonna give that 5% or minus 2%. or minus two percent rate situation next year. And then what'll probably be about a two percent gain on average per year after that, because you assume again, three percent assessment growth per year is about the average we expect. I, I, I really struggle with the disequitable or inequitable treatment of our fire department in this type of problem. They deserve that low SAP. The rate would have to go to probably a buck two to a buck five from Milton. And just to give you a comparison, say, they pay to Rock City Falls currently about a buck thirty-four or five, and they pay to Harmony Corners a buck forty-nine, the taxpayers did. We are getting, according to their proposal, next year, ninety-five cents. It's forty cents below the next highest. I don't think it's too much to ask to get a low SAP off the ground for our fire department. And, you know, that's where my constrination comes from. Yes, we could run the department with the five percent and pay for the trucks. I fully agree with them on that. I've run the numbers as much as anybody. You know me, I'm a wonk when it comes to this stuff. It's just, I really have trouble sleeping at night when I see this inequity occurring for our fire department. And it shouldn't. It really shouldn't. Tom Milton funds one entirely and another part of another one. It seems to be an expectation value that that funding should come for ours as well. And it's not. And that hurts me when I think about this.
So, so I understand, like, why you want that, but the concern here is this is their offer. And we're kind of at a pass. There's been a lot of effort to try to move in that direction. More time given for it. I know they're currently in their budgeting process. And that is the concern is that if we don't answer, that's where he's concerned.
Well, I, I know John Frolish is watching this meeting right now and I'm going to say it to him publicly and to everybody right now. John, please, consider treating our fire department equitably in this situation. We appreciate the five percent offer, but there's even more that can be had from our pockets and from yours and even Boston's, and we should be doing it. We should be doing the right thing and putting them on equal footing at the end of the day. And there's no reason not to get them there. So I would ask, and he can write me tomorrow and say no, but I think our fire chief had a fear that was instilled in him for whatever reason, that it was an either or. It shouldn't have to be an either or. And that's what I'm asking for here at the end of the day from Tom of Milton. Stop treating our fire department inequitably on this topic. Let's get it up to a dollar two and work from there. And that will help solve that last remaining piece. Because if we're looking to solve problems and, you know, the taxpayers, I understand, and Tom Milton don't want the tax to go up, but there is such a disparity in what people are paying for fire protection, even with the mutual aid agreement in place. It just doesn't seem right that that disparity is that large in the first place. And it's getting bigger by the year, especially under what they're offering right now, probably. Okay, Liz, what, what's, what's your thought, Liz? I'm going to, I called you out earlier. I'm going to go, go for it.
Seems to make sense. I mean, there's one benefit. I think you also have to look at the number of properties and the value of those properties and then the total amount of dollars you're getting. I mean, it looks like from what you said, the total amount with the five percent is there to cover their needs. But it doesn't include this added benefit, which other, the part, which that town is supplying. I don't know, you know, I mean, this, I'm not involved in this anymore. Just from that, that standpoint, our folks should get the same benefits as, as other fire departments. And I don't know how you work that out or if there's anything else going on, but seems logical to me.
I appreciate that. And we'll see. I, I just wanted to be fully transparent about kind of where that concern is. Again, yes, we can run the department on the five percent increases. Yes, it's just a question of that additional piece right now.
I think too, though, it's not just about the cover's operations cost. They are able with this to build that reserve. So.
Okay.
So I just, I want that to be clear. It is very clear to me that this is the town's offer. And I, I don't think this is going to be the time that we're going to be able to make this adjustment.
Well, their taxpayers should know.
I hear, I appreciate your efforts. You've, you've done a lot. But it's just at this point, I think this is what they're offering.
But I would never, who I just said, their taxpayers should know. Because at the end of the day, I don't think a town of Milton taxpayer would feel comfortable knowing that they were providing or their neighbors were providing something to this group of fire depend, but they're not providing or helping to provide ultimately that same thing to this group of firefighters. And I think that's something that needs to be understood. Because at the end of the day, they are servants to their taxpayers in this topic. And I don't think they know anything in the town with respect to that. I haven't heard people discuss it. I've tried to be reasonable in what I put out publicly. But when you can boil it down to one issue and show the disparities going on, I think it's a lot easier to grasp for everybody the challenge or the, the remaining challenge of this. And that it's not insurmountable. It's not. And again, we're, we're putting our money, if we do this, where our mouths are too. It's not like we're saying, just gimme, gimme, gimme. We're going to, to do this, we'd have to put up another forty thousand dollars. Give you a few more dollars the first year, just get it off the ground while they build up their number over time. Nobody's asking them to give us just a bunch of money all at once. It's just a question of work with us to get this done now over the next five years. It's a five-year agreement, Bernadette. So to say that it's not, you know, you know, not this year type thing, it's not ever.
No, no, that's not so. That's, that's not what the chief's saying. He's saying with the five, you know, taking five percent, right, over five years. They know they can cover the costs and the tax and all that. They would in the future budget for it. And that, I don't think they're reading necessarily for Milton. Honestly, should we even wait on other people to provide this? Either we're providing for our fire department volunteers.
We don't have a hundred forty thousand.
No, I know. But what I'm saying is there's a way, what he thinks there is a way to accomplish this in the future without having to necessarily, yeah, it'd be great. It'd be great to have whatever amount we want. I'm just, I'm just laying the reality is I don't think it's changing.
Even to perhaps in a couple of years, as Wise Fervus dropped to me, a couple of years, reopen for low SAP purposes, negotiations, have a clause where it's mandatory type thing. Something to get it off the ground because we aren't, we aren't there. We can't afford the one for you. Okay, you, I'm going to tell you what the numbers do show. And one of the fallacies that occurred, you know, for whatever reason, you know, currently you're coming out of the budget year, they thought they had about a two hundred thirty thousand dollar pad. But then when you looked at it, I think I talked about this last meeting, radios, you know, twenty thousand dollars of the radios, I think it was, were budgeted for last year. They were purchased in this budget year. And I said, you budgeted for those last year. That needs to go to twenty twenty-five because that shouldn't create this blow scenario. And it's also going to screw your budget over this year if you're not careful with that. And, you know, we've got to be more careful. Kevin and I had this discussion today. I'm going to start going through, making sure, especially at any year, that any big ticket items that they had on their budget are getting bought. Because I think that out of fear or need to improve their reserve, they're not making purchases and that shouldn't be happening. If they've got to make a purchase, make a purchase. Okay, we're funding it. We want you to make a purchase and they will have enough reserve to be okay.
Are they getting the ledgers? I, I think it's more a question that they get those. They used to get those every month.
Bernadette, we discussed it today and Melissa's working with them, getting exactly what's up for her. She gave them one version of things today. He needs another version. So she's working with them on that.
Because that would help them see what's going on.
But he also is aware that there was a fear going on, that a lot of things didn't necessarily get bought last year because they were going into repairs so much. But I threw last year away mentally as a zero dollar year for them because of the amount of repairs. So this, you know, we're finishing up trying to close up the books. That's what the AFR process does, not make sure all the expenditures that belong, but are, are in fire and vice versa. So we'll see what the actual number was. But my notion is that they, out of fear, didn't buy everything they should have bought. And that shouldn't be happening. They should feel the ability to buy what they've got budgeted, get a reserve still and be able to pay for trucks and have a low SAP. That's what every other fire department is able to do. We should be afforded the same opportunity. And we're trying as the village, because it's our department, to afford them that opportunity. But I get concerned when I see that happening a little bit. I'm like, why? There's no way you have that level of reserve from last year. So what didn't we buy? And part of the answer is radios. Okay, that's, that's simple. We're going to just push it back there to twenty twenty-five where it should be. So we know this year's actual budget is not going to be affected by that. That, that's the type of stuff that I think this discussion has unfortunately bred and really scares me that they feel the need to do that. They don't need to do that. There's money on the table enough to do it. Now, the only left thing is low SAP. That's it. They can have about nine hundred thousand to a million dollars of reserve by twenty thirty in this situation. And that sets up properly for two and a half million dollar truck coming in around twenty thirty. That's why that number sounds large, but they need to start making some hefty payments right off the bat. So that goal can be met and should be met. And they should be able to afford their operating budget as normal with what they need. Their turnout here, their SCBA says they need to change them up and everything else. So I want to make sure that they've got everything they need for years, for five years, basically. And that's well beyond when I'm going to be in this chair. So I'm just making sure to sub in the future.
So I, I can't speak for Milton, but, um, thinking about their, what their position might be. For one, I, I think they would think that their tax rates are irrelevant and it's really just what is the actual cost that they should support? Um, and are they paying their fair amount? And then the other issue, I'm wondering if they believe our numbers. So in terms of the hundred forty thousand, how well is that documented?
Provided.
You know, as, as you know, my big objection to the budget this year was that the line, fire line items were bloated. They were, they were much higher than even what the fire departments asked for, much higher. And so Milton may see those kinds of approaches and wonder exactly what the number should be and what they are and how much they should be paying. And I wouldn't blame them for wanting to know a little more before committing. But I agree that our firefighters should be covered by low SAP like everyone else. I also think we should, I think all the negotiation that could happen has happened and we should do this contract for the sake of our fire company and vote it forward.
Well, but you just said two separate things. I want, just want you to be aware. Because technically, if you're saying vote for as it is, they won't get a low SAP. That, that's the problem. I, I get where you're going with it, but I just want you to understand that that's, you can't have both points at the same time there.
I don't know what the numbers they're seeing that they don't agree with are exactly. Maybe if their, contracts can be amended. So if, if there's some agreement on this final low SAP issue in the future, that can be added into the contract.
As I said to you, though, what I think happened here is Kevin had told them that he didn't need a low SAP before I got to talk with him. And I had to explain to them, yeah, he says he doesn't need a low SAP because he thinks he's leaving something else off the table if he does that for his department. And I said, it shouldn't be that. It should be, you can have both. You can have what you need and you can have the low SAP. And here's what the funding is to make that happen. Here's what we have to contribute. Here's what you could contribute. Here's what Boston can contribute and get it done. And, you know, I talked to Dave Jorkovich, who's the controller in Tom of Boston. He's willing to actually sit down all three parties and have a discussion about that. Because I said to him, he, he agrees. Dave Jorkovich agrees that the five percent situation is a good offer, except for if you need the low SAP, then obviously it brings another prong to the problem that needs to be discussed on how you handle it. And that's what he's wanting to sit us down and talk about.
So maybe you can't get everything exactly when, when we want it. But maybe it does cover a lot of trends. It adds the reserve. It covers a lot of forward-looking expenses. And so I've been comfortable signing it with the understanding that the conversation will continue around low SAP. And hopefully there can be an agreement on the actual costs involved and what the commitment needs to be over, you know, next year even. But there is a value to, to, you know, having a contract in place.
Ben, could cause eviction now, as you.
Oh, yes. So I was reading Municipal Matters, our lovely magazine for, like to official. And one of the things that you talked about is this good cause eviction law, which was passed a couple of years ago at the state level. And it's a law that local municipalities can choose to adopt through a law, through a local law. And basically the law limits, to some degree, rent increases, although it's, it's still to be quite high and requires good cause for eviction to provide protection to renters. So you can, what it means for tenants is you'll have protection from arbitrary evictions. You'll have some stability, lease renewal, as long as you're following your lease and not doing anything illegal. And you'll have predictable, reasonable rent increases, which can still be well above the cost of living and wage increases. For the community, it can mean increased stability. Renters are more able to stay in their apartments, continue to invest in the community, go to work, keep their kids in the same schools. So it is an investment in our community and a protection for our community. Because as Liz mentioned, our P is over, is about half renters now. And it's going to probably increase beyond half with Conifer and who knows what's happening and the other nursing home and other places in the future. So I'll just read a little few details. Rent increases are limited to, they're defined as lower of either ten percent above the current tenant's current rent or five percent plus Consumer Price Index. So this year, that would be eight point two percent. So you are allowed a, a pretty hefty rate increase year to year if you add the five percent above the Consumer Price Index. And based on what I found online last year, rate increases were about four and a half percent or so. So well within, prior to that, coming out of the epidemic, twenty-one, twenty-two, the rate increase was like fifteen percent, eleven percent, very high. And, but that is, I think, abnormal. And the normal rent increases, this will stay within what the, the limit of this is pretty easily. When it comes to good cause evictions, justify grounds for eviction under the good cause include non-payment of rent, lease violations, nuisances, damage, illegal uses. If the owner wants to use the property for their own family, they can go ahead and do that. If there's demolition, the land, you know, plans to demolish the house, you can, landlord can withdraw the, the property from the rental market completely. Or if the lease, or the tenant refuses to agree to a reasonable changes in the lease or the access, the tenant refuses to allow access. There's also a lot of tenants and landlords who are excluded from this law. Tenants who live in units built after two thousand and nine. Tenants who live in owner-occupied buildings with less than eleven units. Tenants who live in luxury housing, those are not included, are also the rent stabilized housing. So like the Conifers, affordable housing would not be covered by this, but they're covered by other restrictions.
It's not considered affordable housing.
What's a considered workforce? Is that similar to affordable housing?
It's not the same term.
Right. But it's low-income housing.
No, not necessarily.
Well, there's all these, there's like three tiers, right? So here, here's the language. It says, would not include unit, uh, on or within a house accommodation where such unit must be affordable to tenants at a specific income level pursuant to statute, regulation, restrictive declaration or pursuant to regulatory agreement with a local, state or federal government entity. So there are income requirements for this unit and they are, have to offer these units at a certain rent. So it would not, so that, that meets the definition of what I just read, in my opinion.
I would be really cautious naming names of not yet built folks.
All right, I'll take it all back.
Just be careful.
But anyway, yeah, so you're right. I, it's, I'm not a lawyer, but that is my reading of, of. I'm not a lawyer, but that is my reading of that piece. So people understand that, you know, whether it's that property or some other affordable unit property that is, has regulations attached, it's not part of this law. So in order to do this law, which I don't think is going to have a huge disruptive impact on this village, but could help stabilize the community to some degree and prevent abuses, we would need to adopt a law. And this has been done by about at least 15 other municipalities to date, including some villages, cities, towns. The other thing that localities can control is what the definition of a small landlord. Small landlords are excluded so far. All 15 jurisdictions that have adopted this law have said that a small landlord is anything more than one unit. So they don't want like a big hole in the law, big exception. So that's been pretty uniform. And we can also determine what the, what the top rate of what is called luxury apartments are. It's two, the default is 245% of the average rent or. So anyway, those are details. So that's what I thought I'd bring forward. I didn't put it in the form of motion or anything. I just wanted to introduce the idea. And I can send the board and post online more information about this as you'd like. What are your thoughts?
I think you should have sent us probably the specific details because you just rattled off a bunch of things and I have no idea right now.
Okay, I'll send you more of these details. And it's all online, that's where I've got everything. I'll send you a link to the law itself.
Okay.
But in terms of the concept, there any?
I wanna read into it before I commit to, or even indicate one way or the other. It's pretty extensive with the impacts. So I'd have to, according to what you're reading, I wanna read it in detail.
All right, I will send you a lot of detail, then I will bring it.
I don't doubt it, Ben.
I will bring it back for next meeting.
I do wanna remind you that the time to be able to draft another law, because this is what would require a right sensible resolution.
Yeah, it's a law, yeah, definitely a law.
So we, the order of events are probably this, other component, zoning, other components of zoning and sidewalks, just to give you kind of the rank order right now, probably for how we have to handle things.
Well, I know Carla right now is waiting on us, for example, to provide feedback on zoning. So it's not as if her days are filled with zoning.
Yeah, she's working at IMA with.
Well, I'm sure there's lots of things, but it's not as if you one thing and then another thing, then another thing, you know, I believe that there can be multiple projects because one project has a lot of activity, then it gets handed off, then you do another project, so.
How's your workload these days, Carla?
I'll do whatever the board wants me to do.
Thank you, Carla. All right, so I'll bring this back next week, I will send you all.
I want you to go have a mixed drink on a Caribbean island somewhere. How's that? No hope.
Oh, God. All right, thank you. I don't know if anyone else, the other board members have comments on that. You know, I did, the other thing I would be interested in is community feedback. We did hear some people talk and support. Be interesting to hear from landlords and their experience or perspective as well. So I guess the message is that, you know, we'll continue this conversation. And people should feel free to share at more meetings and also an email what you think of this idea.
Who was adopted around here besides Albany, I'm sure you're asking?
Kingston.
How about north of Albany?
Let's see, a lot of it is in the Hudson Valley.
They're all downstate.
Ithaca, southern here.
Here, I got City of Albany, Kingston, Poughkeepsie, City of Poughkeepsie, Town of Poughkeepsie, Ithaca, Beacon, Nyack, Hudson, Catskill, Rochester, City Rochester, Village of Croton on Hudson, Town of Fishkill, Village of New Paul, City of Newburg, City of Binghamton.
Nick Tahos would move here if he did it from Rochester, I would consider it.
Pusa and Bogans.
Okay. No, I'm sorry. Too large. Nick Tahos is a place that serves, they're called Red Hots, but they serve garbage plates, which is.
I'm sorry, that's not.
You've mentioned that over and over.
I don't know why people like that.
Which is hash brown potatoes, essentially, chopped onions. You, I get a cheeseburger, garbage plate, when I go in, so a cheeseburger on top of it, chili sauce, mustard, macaroni salad.
This is not pregnant.
I'm just saying, if you want to know what a garbage plate is.
Just took a left turn.
All right, that's all I have right tonight. Thank you for your time and attention.
Okay.
I mean, Carla, do you have anything to add, insight, perspective?
She wants some extra in there.
No, I mean, it's Article 6A of the real property law. You're looking at, you know, section 214, 213 of the law. I'm familiar with it, but other than the City of Albany, there's nothing, none around here have ever, have done it. So I'd be curious if you knew if anybody around here has done it. We can get information from them, that would be helpful.
Yeah, the, the housing renewal.
Yeah, no, I've seen that. I know that, but that lists the 15 people, the 15 municipalities. They're all cities, villages, and then there's two towns. But they're all downstate or to the southern tier.
Yeah, somewhere west of, well, there's Rochester, there's Binghamton.
Yeah, what is the average population of the areas that are doing it, I guess is probably a relative question.
There's a few villages, but they are south here. But we are in Saratoga, near Saratoga Springs. This is a very high, and you'll read from the Economic Commission report that rents are, Capital Region Housing Affordability Study, 2024, Capitalistic Regional Planning Commission, rents are higher than the affordable rates in particularly in Saratoga County. And they've been going up higher than the rate of inflation. So it is a real issue, you know. I understand as you get closer to New York City, it becomes even more of an issue. But this county is particularly also, and the whole capital region, actually, according to this report, is experiencing significant upward pressure for rents and other expenses as well.
But I mean, let me just ask you a point in question. Is this like a de facto rent control approach for municipalities?
I don't, wouldn't call it that because it allows you to have.
You got a yes and a no.
Cost of living. Well, I don't know all the laws and legalities behind rent control, but I do know.
Carla.
This law allows you to go up either 10% or cost of living plus 5%. So that's over 8% just this past year.
Whichever is lower or higher.
Whichever is lower. So typically, it's gonna be around 8% or, so that's a good, healthy increase year to year. So I wouldn't call it rent controlled. It's certainly higher than, than the cost of living even, you know. Landlords wrote this bill along with tenants, it wasn't, or tenant associated, it wasn't, you know, it was definitely a meeting of the minds.
Is it essentially rent control?
I mean, I'm not completely familiar with rent control, but it sounds like it controls the rent, so I was just kind of doing that. But I don't, honestly, I don't, I'm not familiar enough with rent control because that's what's out there.
I feel like what I said earlier, I think we need to all read.
Right.
I just wanted to say what I felt, when I, hearing what you said so far, I was curious if that was.
Yeah, I don't know what label that serves.
Maybe talk to the City of Saratoga Springs if they're, you know, you're, were in Saratoga County, perhaps speaking with the city to see if they have looked into it. Because it really seems like cities are looking into it more than towns and villages. It's just a thought.
Yeah, I'll look at that. I know Sargides is also at least talking about it. I'll ask, I'll ask City of Saratoga Springs.
Okay, Ben, you know what time it is for you to say, Frank, move on to the next topic.
I am finished. I'm not gonna tell you what to do, Frank.
This is the one time I invited you to.
Time for the next topic.
There you go, I like it. This will be the new catchphrase for us, to kind of close things out. Public comment on any issue for three minutes. And as always, remember the general rules of respect, directing everything to the board, not to the board members per se, not name-calling, et cetera, et cetera. I see Lisa first, go ahead.
In regard to the Facebook post on the Ayr's page initially started with, we have seen an uptick in rabid foxes. While I appreciate that it was made and the post was edited to show the word potential rabid, I am troubled that a concern for resident's safety is causing misinformation to be spread or at the very least, information misinterpreted. In reading the posts, our animal control officers that are charged with answering calls pertaining to animal issues have both stated there have been no verified rabies cases in the incident that occurred to prompt this post, and in fact, it was manged. I digress to those with more knowledge than I to make that determination. The Village of Boston Spa is surrounded and divided by woods and water, with numerous wildlife species living and passing through its boundaries. I am concerned that the work being done on the Devisco Trail, as well as on the Hillney Head Brookside Museum, has caused disturbance to the wildlife and caused them confusion, angst, displacement, and forced them into finding new homes, and in doing so, creating uptick in seeing them in the downtown district. With that being said, this post instilled fear and for those of us that appreciate the wildlife, concern for their safety, the safety of the animals in question, and that law enforcement is not always the appropriate source to call, at least not I am one, unless the person is in imminent fear of danger or has been attacked. I myself saw a fox in my yard when I initially moved here that was acting in a manner I wouldn't normally expect to see. It was daytime, it was sickly looking short on its fur, it was sunning itself. I was concerned, not for me, but for the neighbor that has a toddler. I called the non-emergency number, the village police precinct, and I was told because it wasn't aggressive, it was most likely sick, what I know now with education was manged, to leave it be and it would make its way into the woods, as it did. No harm, no foul, animal and residents safe. What changed in a four-year timeframe is there body cam video of this incident. Residents seem to be formed of facts, including the skunk that was on the fairgrounds that was said to be phoning at the mouth from a comment on the same post. Was this skunk sent for testing and confirmed rabid? There are too many unanswered questions and misinformation. I request that serious look be taken into hiring a full-time animal control officer for the Village of Boston Spa to enforce the current code on the books for all animal control matters, as well as have them educated on how to safely assess wildlife situations for the creatures that inhabit the fields. Assess wildlife situations for the protection of not only the residents and visitors of the Village of Boston Spa, but for the creatures that inhabit the fields, the creeks, streams, ponds, and the wooded areas, and recognize that we humans are creating adverse conditions for them. We need to do our due diligence to respect them when we destruct, modify, invade their space. Thank you.
Liz.
Frank, would it make sense to move that speaker this way for this?
We can hear it, this picks up pretty well from the same, so we can.
All the way over here.
Yeah.
Hi, Liz, that opened up to the fairground. I wasn't even gonna talk, but since anybody wants to keep talking about the skunk that was in my yard, I'm gonna address it so everybody knows what happened. So the Wednesday of the week of the fair, my husband and I went outside and there was a skunk during the daytime that was in our yard. We attempted to call animal control, we didn't get a hold of them, we left some messages. Since the fair was going on, we tried to get ahold of the guys that were in DEC over at the fairground. They told us that we had to call some nuisance control. They weren't gonna help us catch it or do anything. It was just acting weird at that point. As everybody knows, the sheriff set up at the fair. One of them saw me kind of walking around and they came over to ask him what was wrong. And he stayed with us. He tried to help us get NCon on the phone, nobody helped us. We tried to call several people and nobody helped us. I wanna make that clear, that nobody helped us except for the sheriff. And so he stayed with us, trying to get people on the phone. Eventually, the skunk keeled over, started having a seizure and phoned me out the mouth. And the sheriff said, looked at us and he said, I gotta take care of it. I can't leave it like this anymore, and we shot it in my yard. So let's put it in the trash can, and that's what we did. It didn't get tested. Did it have rabies? I don't know. So I just wanna say that's what happened. And it would be great if we could get a path, like Frank said. Who can we actually call to get help? Because in my situation, nobody but the sheriff helped me. So that's it.
Thanks, Liz. And I just wanna say, hearing from you and then hearing what happened on Friday, I was really perplexed as to this process myself. Because you think you know what it is, and then the more you look into it, it's like, okay, that's not really how it's playing out. And that definitely upreded some concern for me. And to hear Chief Bush say, I wanna take care of it, was like, well, I guess it makes a lot of sense why you want to at least be able to usher it through, and I get that. So thank you for sharing that with everybody. Any else? Go ahead, Liz.
Liz from O'Zaydenheim, hi. One quick question. I think last week or the week before, or of the last meeting, Trustee Baskin mentioned translation services. I didn't know, is that something you checked into?
Jen?
I put in the application, the first part of the application today, and I changed the website to be all languages right after I put it in.
Great, great. Second thing on this whole rabies thing, I was just looking, I did not find anything that said they'll test only if they bite. Actually, they say people usually get exposed to rabies virus when infected animal bites them. Exposure may also occur if saliva from a rabid animal enters an open cut or mucous membrane, eyes, nose, mouth, so not just bites. I would think someone in the county, because I think it's the county's responsibility and they, and what I was reading here referenced calling the Department of Health, that they would be interested in testing if there was this, you know, an animal with suspected rabies that had been killed.
Just, just to be clear, I did talk Chief Bush about what steps were taken in this case. He did attempt to get multiple agencies to do it, and none would take it for the same reason that Boston says in their website about no bite. And so he did try this.
Department of Health?
Yes.
County Department of Health?
He tried multiple organizations.
Okay, because I would think, I would talk to them and say.
Look, I agree with you, Liz, I'd rather have it tested so I could say definitively yes or no, instead of having to say you have to assume the worst because you don't know, type scenario. It sucks, it does, but at the same time, here we are.
Yeah, I would check with the county because I think that's wrong for them to test only if someone's bitten. Because really, they should know, is there a rabid animal in the vicinity who could pass it on to other animals and et cetera? Or no, there's no rabies, you know, people can rest assured that, you know, that fox that they see running across the driveway, you know, during the day is just out trying to, it'll get warm or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Any else inside? Karen, I'm sorry.
Sorry. With the whole landlord situation. Oh, sorry, Karen of Anarias, Chinese High Street. As a landlord, growing up, my family having an apartment, and as a younger person, I rented. So I see both sides, and I'm glad that you wanna hear things from landlords. And I know unfortunately, there's been times where we have had to evict people due to non-payment, and it is a very long process where you lose lots of money. You have to pay lots of attorney fees. So I would just like to hear more about that. And I know a lot of the people here in the village who are landlords. And we like to keep our tenants happy and for as long as possible. And we hate when they move on to buying homes or whatever. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Anybody else inside? Rory, go ahead, second.
Can I stand up here to show I walk through the, I'll walk the, why not?
Walk the, walk the plane.
I'd love to see your shining face.
Rory O'Connor, 199, Milton Avenue. I'm speaking tonight as a real estate broker for over 40 years. And I would like to address the problem with rentals and this good cause eviction suggestion that Trustee Baskin brought up. The reason that you can't find a place to live is because of fact that it's too expensive to buy a house for the vast majority of people because interest rates are at a very high level, highest in years. The prices of property have gone geometrically. But the biggest problem is landlords don't want tenants anymore. I agree with Karen, again, if you have good tenants, you try very hard to keep them, all right? I'd hate to tell you the number of landlords that I represented over the last couple of years when this started to ooze on a downstate up into this area. They want out, they're selling their property. They don't want big apartments, they don't want the hassle of having to. They want out. They're selling their properties. They don't want big apartments. They don't want the hassle of having to try to evict a tenant because it's, Karen is right. The landlord has no rights any longer under laws in the state of New York. If you don't believe me, my suggestion is you look up the new laws for landlords and tenants in the state of New York, and read them, and then ask yourself if you'd like to be a landlord. Because my guess is you'd say no. And that includes you, Ben. All right? It's a very, very difficult process if you have the wrong people, or the more importantly, the people that understand the system and how to beat it. And they do, and they will, and they will do nothing but cause landlords grief and money. So my point is simple. If you're going to look at this type of thing, look at it very carefully from all sides. Because if you try to rent an apartment in the village of Boston Spa right now, I bet you couldn't find one. And if you did find one, you'd be spending a lot of money. And the reason you're spending a lot of money is because you can't get a mortgage. And you can't get a mortgage because your income and your debt ratio doesn't work for the bank at 7%, and the price of the house is too high. So if those things are all in play, you can afford the cash to pay very high rents, but you can't afford to buy a house because the bank won't lend you the money. That's all I have to say, and I appreciate the opportunity to chat with you, and I thought the meeting was quite entertaining. Haven't been here in a while, and I think it was considerably better than I've looked at in the past. So congratulations to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Didn't even serve popcorn or anything.
I was looking for that.
Anybody else in the room? Anna? Anna is up there, I think?
Yeah, Victoria and Paula have put their hands up for.
Let me go to Anna because I just want to dispense with that one, I think.
All right.
No probably the topic she's on, but go ahead.
Did you say go ahead to me?
Yes, I did.
Okay, Anna Stanko, 32 Kent Street. This, what I, my comment has a little bit to do with the landlord thing, but on a different note. I have complained several times to the building inspector about the trashcans that are in the right of way at the corner of Milton Avenue and Van Buren Street. They have seven trashcans out there. They were left, they've been on the sidewalk for months and months. When he sent a letter, they moved them to the little patch of green pa, green grass between the sidewalk and the road, and they are still there. Now, this landlord does have a large enough backyard behind the one house that they could move their trashcans, but will not. Last night, when I was walking through the village with my little pups, there are now two places, maybe three, right on Milton Avenue between Front Street and Malta Avenue that the trashcans are sitting in front of the building. So somebody, some landlords, one's in front of Straight Edge Barber, and one is further south. They're just leaving, I mean, now they just have their trashcans out there all the time. So I don't know who these landlords are. A couple of them are LLCs, so I guess good luck. But I mean, we're starting to look like Schenectady. It's really rather nasty. So I encourage the board to encourage the building inspector and/or court enforcement officer to do something about these buildings, or I mean, about these trash. It's nasty. And nobody should have to walk by these trashcans at night smelling seven people's or eight people's garbage all the time. And I know the other residents have reached out to the mayor about the ones on Van Buren Street. So as far as being a landlord, I agree with Rory. We have three places. Thank God, two of them are rented to family. Because there are horror stories out there. So I do also caution you to be very careful about the laws you pass. Landlords are in the minority and taken advantage of. That's all. Thanks, guys. It's been a good meeting.
Thank you. Okay, Jen, dealer's choice on this one. Go ahead.
Yes, Victoria Raznan, 795 County Route 68. I want to just say thank you for the invite to attend your meeting. I'm not sure who invited me. But I want to give my credentials. I am a licensed rabies vector species rehabber. And I just want to point out that the officer's depiction of that fox was not statistics with rabies patients. They usually present with nothing wrong, other than the symptoms that I had mentioned in my four emails, messages, whatever, comments. The other thing I wanted to know, I've got a couple of questions, is who did you try to contact through DEC? Do you not have the ECO, Environmental Control Officers' phone numbers? They are publicly listed. And if you couldn't get ahold of an ECO, why not try a rehabber? We are qualified to handle situations. We are volunteer, mind you. So some of us do have full-time jobs and can't respond quite as fast. But, you know, why were those people not contacted? Why was it derivative to the police officer? I also want to advise all board members that you do not have to go through the Board of Health to have an animal tested for rabies. You can go right to the Path Lab down in Delmar. The gentleman heads it up. His name is Kevin Hines. I have his phone number. I have his email. And he would have really liked to have gotten ahold of that fox for their own records and statistics and testing. So he would like to offer his services going forward to any animal that is suspected of rabies in your town. The other thing I'd like to know is, was there any body cam? Was there any footage? Is there any picture of this animal? And was it a red or a gray fox? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up?
You didn't answer.
No, you. Yeah, we don't, we don't answer necessarily right this second, so.
But we, that was good information. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah? Paula Sheridan?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is Paula Sheridan, 881 Alden Avenue, Warrensburg, New York. I'm a licensed wildlife rehabilitator with the Heart of the Wild Rescue, and I specialize in foxes and coyote. And I'm kind of backing up a little bit of what Victoria said. Because of the recent Facebook post regarding a fox that was reportedly shot for potentially being rabid on Facebook, and again, tonight you stated that the animal could not be tested, and that is definitely not accurate. In New York State, if an animal is suspected of having rabies, it should be submitted for testing to the New York State DEC Wildlife Health Unit at 108 Game Far Road in Delmar. Their phone number, should you need it, 518-478-2203. I spoke with them today, as well as the Bureau of Wildlife down in Albany, and they confirmed before announcing to the public that an animal is potentially rabid, it is best practice to have the animal tested, the animal bagged and kept on ice, it should be triple bagged, excuse me, kept on ice until it can be transported to the lab in Delmar. Public health departments are the contact for human exposures. But for wildlife, including possible rabies cases, the DEC Health Unit is the appropriate agency to call for testing and guidance. Announcing that a fox is rabid without testing and creating unnecessary fear can lead to harm to healthy or treatable wildlife. Mange, for example, is a common and very treatable condition that can cause foxes to appear sick and definitely be active in the daytime. In the future, I respectfully ask that before making public statements about rabies and wildlife, the proper agencies be consulted and testing performed. This ensures the public receives accurate information and protects both human and our animals' health. Thank you for your time and for your concern for public safety. Paula Sheridan.
Thank you. Okay, time for... Oh, Kristen. Actually, one thing before we go there. I would like to suggest to folks, the last two that called in or zoomed in, that you might want to be contacting actually the Town of Boston Animal Control, because we're reading directly from their webpage here, and this is who we deal with on these topics generally. An animal is tested for rabies only if it has bitten a person or pet. Dave Brown, Dog Patrol Officer, 518-477-0908 for Town of Boston. And also, I believe that view is shared by Dave Trzynski for the Town of Milton. And they are at 518-832-3505. That is Dave Trzynski, the Animal Control Officer for Town of Milton. Those are our animal control officers. And they seem to corroborate each other, even though they say they don't deal with wildlife on my Facebook post this weekend. This seemed to be consistent with the information that they were suggesting along the way. So, and also, again, our chief of police went to numerous agencies, and they would not take the animal. So I just wanted to be clear, and one last thing I want to be clear on. Nobody shot the animal because it was rabid. They shot the animal because it charged an officer and tried charging a resident and their pet. The byproduct was that there's a belief that the fox may have been rabid over and above that situation. It's, this is a chicken and egg question, and this was a safety issue that led to an immediate response that was necessary based on a call from a resident who had a legitimate concern. And as such, the warning was appropriate because the warning included the situation as it developed. Kristen?
Hi there. Am I unmuted?
We can hear you.
Great, thank you. This is Kristen Ikalucci, 24 Chapman Street. I'm disappointed, but not surprised with Mayor Rossi's explanation of his Facebook behavior this weekend. He needs to apologize for how he responded to constituents and municipal employees on social media. It's wrong, inappropriate, and not the first time he has behaved this way and spread misinformation and sowed fear on his official mayor Facebook page. It needs to stop, and he needs to apologize and to take accountability for his actions instead of blaming others, specifically now, Boston and Milton Animal Control just now. It's my understanding that the village police department has their own ways to issue public safety alerts, if that's even appropriate. And in this instance, according to multiple professional wildlife officials we've heard from tonight, it was not appropriate at all. I appreciate hearing from the experts tonight. I would hope the mayor would humble himself and listen to their advice on future public relation decisions he makes on his official mayor Facebook page that represents all of us, or supposedly, supposed, apparently does. Separately, if I still have time, and if the mayor will allow it, I would like to speak as in favor of the good cause eviction law and looking forward to this. I appreciate hearing from landlords and that they want to do right by their tenants. That's great to hear. I also know a lot of renters and have rented in the past, and it's not always the case that we have good landlords that want to keep us and want to work with us. I've had landlords that have inexplicably doubled my rent without any notice. And this good cause eviction law would protect renters from those kind of outrageous landlord situations, and would also help landlords, again, be protected in being able to help have actionable cause to evict if there is good cause. So I think it could be something that could be beneficial for both renters in our village and landlords, and I think it should be something that should be looked into and not dismissed outright. Thank you.
Okay. Other business included, but not limited to board response to public comment. Ben, I'm sorry to hear.
I'm good.
Thank you. Mary?
I just, with all of the concern for animals, I'm a huge animal lover. I love them too much. I've got a fox in my backyard and I want to go out and kiss it.
Please don't.
You know, when you're in a situation and the person who had the dog, you have no idea how the animal is going to react, if it's acting aggressively. If it's, if your child or your grandchild who's out there, you're going to want the fastest action taken possible. And who wants to wait to try to see if DEC is going to call you back or NCON? And in a perfect world, you would have that time, as Liz mentioned. They tried different contacts and they didn't have any help. Unfortunately, they did what they had to do at the time. Thankfully, no one was dead. And if you want to take it down to Delmar to have it be tested, fine, but you're going to have to kill it anyway in order to take it to Delmar to be tested. So, you know, you would have an answer whether it have rabies or not, but you're still killing the animal. It's an unfortunate situation, and I think it was handled, again, like I said, the best way that it could be handled at the time.
Rida?
Good thinking.
I just want to reiterate. It's a safety and concern for our residents here in the village of Boston Spa that left with us. And I, I am never going to apologize, I'm sorry to say, for making out for the health, safety, and welfare for our residents. Flat out, that was the intention. Our police chief is the one that asked for it to be posted. And again, this is an unusual request from him, and I did so because he wanted to make sure it got out to as many people as possible. And there's a reason why it was worded the way it was, which was essentially the same thing you say to a child with a stove. Assume it's hot, don't touch it. Assume it's in a sick position, don't go near it in this case. And make sure that you get the right folks out there ultimately. I believe our police have a better chance if they can get there to get to the correct next step in general. Be it Delmar or whoever. But like I said, even these pages, which are animal control pages, have advice that counters what we heard on Zoom tonight. And so, like I said, I'm going to be talking to animal control officers to get some consistency and some actual answers, and some history basis, and some future cooperation to see what's going on. Because I'm not going to sit here having a weekend like this, and it wasn't about the Facebook post that I'm talking about. I'm talking about honestly having to be nervous about what was going to happen next, because we've had two weeks of calls, and Liz's situation that she detailed. What's next and who might get hurt? That's what I lose sleep over. Not how many people are, you know, going on Facebook saying it was mange in that picture, and already having said it two times, it's not the right, it's not the picture of that fox. But either way, it's concern for all of you. And if the easiest answer would have been do nothing, and somebody gets hurt, that's not a good answer. So that's my thought on that. Got a motion that the vouchers be audited and the meeting be adjourned at 9:04 PM. Trustee Fandanza, Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. See you next time, folks. Perhaps before the next meeting, we'll see more and get that workshop together. We, I said October for that, but we'll see. Yep.
Facebook.
Rory, you don't feel the authority?
It's to be toxic. Dave got on it, went back, went, and he's like, absolutely not. I will not do it. I'm sorry.